If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. If anyone from the panel would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. We're on to item number three. And I invite to the table Sarah Colson, who is our guest from the Business Industry Association, also known as BIA of New Hampshire. And she'll talk to us about the Workforce Accelerator 2025 program. So, welcome and thank you for coming. Are you going to hit the green?
Yep. There we go. Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate being here today. Can you hear me all right now? Okay, fabulous. So you may have in your packet some of these slides. If you don't, then I'll be kind of talking us through them. I'm going to loosely follow them, but I might, I might go off in a little bit of tangent in a couple of places here. So my name is Sarah Colson. I am the Director of the Workforce Accelerator 2025, which is a partnership between the Business and Industry Association and the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation of New Hampshire. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about career pathways and a few angles of my work. Before I get started, I thought I'd give you a quick overview of my own background just to kind of help you frame out who I am and why this is important to me. I actually started out my career as a high school math teacher at Merrimack Valley High School, so not to be confused with Merrimack. I grew up in Manchester. And actually, I was going to say, as I was driving here, I was recognizing a lot of different landmarks. I lived here for the first year and a half of my life. I don't remember much of it. But, so have a soft spot for Merrimack anyway. But grew up in Manchester, attended UNH, was a high school math teacher. Started out thinking that I was going to do that for the rest of my life. Ended up, after my daughter was born, leaving for a little bit. Started my own business when my kids were small, got kind of tied in with the local Chamber of Commerce. And from there, ended up running the Chamber of Commerce and then made my way to the BIA. So this is a new position as of a year and a half, just a little over a year ago. And I'll share some more details about the position in just one moment here. So I'm going to start by framing the issue and what brings me here today. As part of my work, I talk extensively with the business community. And what I've been hearing is that there are a lot of changes that sometimes occur in school districts that can affect partnerships between schools and industry. And so as we are kind of talking today a little bit about what I'm hearing and what's important to the state and to the economy, I just want you to have that in the back of your mind. That's an awareness piece. It goes both ways because we also know that if you have somebody that's a point person in a business, that if that person leaves, that those relationships between business and educators can also deteriorate. So that's just something to put out there. And then also a little bit about the current needs of our employers in terms of the students. So if you're familiar with 65 by 25, this has been in the news a lot over the past couple of years. And 65 by 25 is a goal that says that 65% of our adult, our adult employers in the workforce need to be highly skilled or credentialed by 2025 in order to meet the demands of our economy. I'm not going to go through all the details of this slide. I'll kind of do a quick overview here. But a few years back, there was a study that came out by Georgetown University that mapped out by state what the economic needs were for each state. Based on that study, New Hampshire Community College System adopted a goal of the 65% by 2025. It was actually a slightly different number that was in the report. But that was brought to what's called the Coalition of Business and Education. And these are a lot of business leaders, educators, legislators, folks who are involved with various organizations around the state that are really heavily involved in workforce development in one way, shape, or form. And this goal was brought to them, and it was really embraced by the entire group. And they wanted to help operationalize it and strategize. How can we move forward and how can we, as a group, those folks in the room, help to make, make some progress towards the goal? A lot of the work that they did, the first group that was put together broke off into two subgroups, but both were really based on education, and so K-12 and higher ed. And the business community kind of tapped us and said, at the BIA, and said, "You really need to get the tie into the business end of things as well." And that's where, moving forward, the BIA and the Charitable Foundation put this position together. And so the Workforce Accelerator, just to kind of briefly describe what my work is, it's a three-year commitment by both organizations. It may go beyond that, but it was initially a three-year commitment to create a sustainable solution to the workforce needs in our state. There are two different parts to this. One is called 65 by 25 facilitation. I call it the herding of the cats. And so this is where all of the different groups that meet together, that talk about, you know, the workforce development and reaching that goal, kind of, we're trying to break down barriers and open lines of communication. But the part that's more pertinent to our conversation today is the school-to-career pathways piece. And so again, I'm just going to skim this, skim over this. This is in your packet. But just looking at metrics for tracking 65 by 25 and convening different groups with the same mission is part of that piece of my work. And on the school-to-career pathways front, which is the more relevant, we first started out by highlighting some businesses that were already engaging with students and so that we had an idea of how businesses were engaging. And we have a link there that can be, you can take a peek at that. Trying to support and encourage more of those types of relationships. So going to businesses who are not currently engaging with local school districts and encouraging them to reach out, help breaking down the barriers, make those connections for them. And this, just getting everybody on the same page about the importance of this. And so here, I'm just sharing a few different examples of school and business partnerships, classroom speakers, job shadows, business tours, mentoring, professional development for teachers, or teacher externships is what they're called, extended learning opportunities. And I'm not sure if you have an ELO coordinator in the high school here. I know that at one point, most schools did have somebody who was a point person for career. And that as time goes on, each, you know, each budget cycle, sometimes those ebb and flow a little bit. So I don't know what the current, with the most recent budget cycle have that, if you have something in place. But if you have an ELO coordinator, that would be fall under the partnerships here. Career and technical education, business involvement in after-school programming and curriculum development when appropriate. That can be at the CTE level or it can be in traditional classrooms as well. And so why are these partnerships important? We know that we have a lot of challenges here in New Hampshire. We have an aging population with a lot of baby boomers. We have lower expectations for in-migration, although the. Is that better? Okay, fantastic. Sorry about that. Thank you. Oh, that's good. Oh, very helpful. Like, oh gosh, she's gone. We also have a slower overall growth in population, decline in K-12 enrollment, change in the K-12 socioeconomic profile and the likelihood to pursue post-secondary education, preparation to enter the workforce. And so there, we're talking broadly about soft skills, but also some substance abuse issues that are going on in the state as well. And then more and more residents leaving the state after graduation. So the latest figure that I had was 59% of our students leave after graduation. And that doesn't help our numbers either in terms of workforce. And so what are our current needs? And I just kind of put a couple of big buckets together here. So the first is that we know that the skills of our young workers need to match the needs of our businesses. Our recent graduates not only need those hard skills, but also the soft skills that employers are looking for. We need our businesses to have an ample supply of skilled workers in order for them to thrive, but also to stay here. And there have been, again, in the news, the governor is very much talking about this more and more as time goes on. But there are a number of businesses in our state that are looking to grow. They want to expand, but the workforce isn't here. And the problem is that if they can't find their workforce here, they're likely to leave. You know, we're fortunate in New Hampshire that many of our businesses are small businesses. They're locally owned. But those that are owned by, you know, folks that are out of state or maybe even out of the country, you know, we're just a number. We're, we're just a little speck on a piece of paper. And as they're eating breakfast in the morning, they're looking over their numbers. And if the numbers don't look good, they're going to pull their business and bring it elsewhere. So that's just something for us to be aware of as a state. It's critical for us to keep businesses here for our communities and for our economic vitality. And then finally, the third bullet there was this, we need to be thought of not just as a nice place to visit. We've done a great job as a state for a long, long time of billing ourselves as a nice place to visit. And I speak as a former chamber director here. You know, we did a great job of marketing, "Come visit, you know, go to the lake." I was up in the Lake Sunapee region, beautiful, you know, it's so picturesque. But to stay and to live and to bring people here to raise a family, we're not as good at doing that. And that's just something we need to be aware of. And as a part of that, just offering jobs as part of that awareness is letting our students know that this is a great place to live. And, you know, changing that mentality of, "Oh, we need to go somewhere else in order for it to be fun and livable." And that's just what that third bullet's about. So I just put up a few strategies here for meeting these needs through education. We need to have clear, clear career pathways for our students. I've made a couple of little notes here, the role of the career and technical education centers, which is not for everyone certainly. And of course, capacity is an issue as well. I know that you send students to a couple of different centers. And that, of course, each center is going to have their own programs, their own classroom limits. Bussing becomes an issue. There are a whole bunch of different reasons why that's not the only answer. But curriculum aligned through K-12 and beyond. There is, there are a lot of conversations going on right now between the Department of Education and the Community College System to, you know, strengthen the alignment between the two pieces. And that's a very helpful piece of this as well. And then career exploration at all levels. So when we talk about the needs of New Hampshire, the career exploration piece actually helps with a lot of it. So the career exploration piece for our students not only opens their eyes to what options are available for them as they are, you know, exploring career and, "Oh, what do I want to do or what do I not want to do?" But it also helps them to realize what is available for them here in the state. And so that can be something, you know, I use my own experience, having grown up in Manchester. I had no idea all of the really neat things. And even as a former educator, had no idea of the different ways that I could have partnered with, with industry in order to enhance the experience for my students. And so I look back at it and I think, "Wow, I thought I was such a great teacher. I really wasn't." I was okay, but could have been better. And so, you know, just made a couple of other little notes here, the dual enrollment program. So, you know, allowing students to start taking college courses while they're in high school kind of gets them a little leg up, gives them a taste of what college is like as well. Linking students to work-based learning opportunities through those partnerships with local businesses. I've said that again and again, and I think I'm going to elaborate just a little bit here. You know, one benefit that I have not spoken of yet in terms of these partnerships is that sometimes students create a nice relationship with an industry partner that can lead to, say, a summer job, that can lead to an internship. And more and more employers at this point are willing to pay for their, for students to be trained. And so we have students that are coming through school that maybe think that, you know, going right off to college is not an option for them for financial reasons, for example. More and more employers are saying, "If you send me someone with the soft skills, I will train them on the hard skills." And so that could mean that they're paying for a four-year degree for that student. It could mean they're paying for a certificate program or a short-term training that can lead to something more and it can help grow the student as they go. So that's just something else to be thinking about on that note. And then how can school boards help? And so I would, I guess I would urge you to think about a district-wide policy, but also philosophy in terms of hiring. As I alluded to way back in the very beginning here, you know, hearing from industry partners that sometimes it is difficult if a relationship has been established and then that person goes away. And I guess here in this district, I'm going to use a different type of example. It's actually going the opposite way. But I had spoken to a couple of you about there had been a strong relationship with the chamber. And when the chamber loses a director, and I did that to my chamber for a short period of time, so I understand what that's about. It, it's difficult because that has been your point person. And when that person leaves, that relationship dissolves. Well, the same thing happens when people internally within the school district leave for the business community. And so if you have a philosophy around hiring, when you're bringing on new people, new individuals, whether it's, you know, a superintendent or an ELO coordinator or just the point person in the guidance department, whoever it is in your district, if there can be some consistency within hiring and a philosophy around the types of people you want in those positions, that can be very helpful for the continuity piece. Implement, oh, those are tied, tied the first two in together, sorry. Talk to your peers within the school board community. So, you know, there's the New Hampshire School Board Association. They are, actually, the executive director had said he was going to send out a sample policy to districts. So that's something that could be available in the very near future for you to be looking at. But also just connecting to others within that group for ideas, for engaging parents around cultural shifts and career development and that sort of thing. And reaching out to businesses in your community. I did make a note there to use the BIA, even though, so I'm housed at the BIA. I'm, it's because of the nature of my work, I'm, I'm in a unique position that I can tap into both the BIA kind of connections and the Charitable Foundation connections. But feel free to use me as a resource, use the BIA with, especially where your local chamber is without a director right now. But even reach out to chamber directors in other cities and towns around you. They can be very, very helpful. And especially in the southern part of the state, everything's a little bit closer than up north, so you can kind of tap into each other's resources. And then finally, just a couple of final thoughts for you as we wrap up, or I wrap up my portion here of talking. I'll ask you some, if you have any questions as well. But just to be thinking about what challenges, known or potential, you have in your district? And how can you build upon your current strengths and successes? So as you move forward and you talk about this as a board, I just left you with those final thoughts. And so with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you, Sarah. And Sarah came to my attention at the NHSBA Delegate Assembly to use a keynote speaker and talk about these very points. And based on some of the discussions we had that really do parallel that very conversation, this is a great time to bring, to bring you in and consider some of the things that resources we could tap. So on that, are there any questions from the board? Michael? If you didn't, I would have been shocked, to be honest. I was thinking of you when I was inviting Sarah here.
Thank you. Hello, Sarah. Thanks for coming tonight and giving that presentation. So one of the things that I've talked to many individuals here about is actually trying to bring the local community and businesses back into the school. Unfortunately, or fortunately, a few years ago, we had someone that actually did assist to actually bridge that gap and help students to be able to become, have the ability to do internships with local, the community and stuff like that. However, as a school budget, a school district, when it comes to budget, and we're being pressured by the taxpayer to actually cut funds. It's a headcount that definitely is not directly related to education. However, I do see that it's, it's connected with the individuals bridging that gap and getting out there. So our challenge as a, as a district, and I'm, I'd ask Marge to back me up here, is finding ways to fund it. And, you know, the businesses have said that they'll, they'll pay for degrees, they'll pay for other things. But maybe if they actually took a step back and actually started working with the school districts and actually helped funding that first, maybe they won't have to actually fund the degrees as much as possible as they do.
Right.
So that's, that's really something that I think that the district has the biggest challenge with today because I'm, I've actually been talking about this. I've, there's individuals within town that I'd love to actually maybe introduce you to also that are trying to do this too.
Sure. Well, so it's interesting. This is a, it's a, it's a common problem. So, you know, it's not unique to this district, obviously, that, you know, the, the budgets and you have no control over how that's going, you know, the votes will go on that. There are districts in the state that are trying to work around that by partnering with the business community. And I can share some examples offline too. But there is a community up in the Lakes Region that has actually partnered with, it's something like their local chamber, a business group, a group of business leaders who have come together and have decided to do just that to fund a position. And so that, what they've done as a school, the high school, has opened up one room within their guidance department, so just a small office, for an outside person from an outside organization, partially funded by the school district. I think the school district maybe puts in about $10,000 or so, but allows the space. And this is someone, obviously, who's been fingerprinted, fully vetted by the school. But her job is to be in that department, doing the career counseling, teaching kids how to, you know, put on a tie, write a resume, everything from that all the way up to creating those partnerships with the business community for the internships. And so it's, it is this nice partnership between the district and the business community where it is funded by that outside source. So I can share that contact with you after this meeting. Put you in touch if you're interested in kind of learning a little bit more about how that came about. It's been in place for at least 10 years, I think. They started out very, very part-time and built up, so now she's full-time during the school year. But that's one example. There are also some folks in the state who are helping to, with short-term grants, mini-grants. The Charitable Foundation does have some of those. I can't speak to exactly what those grants are and what they will fund and what they won't. But I know that there is at least one individual in the state who has worked with the Charitable Foundation in a town with a similar situation where they really wanted to implement work-based learning and didn't have the funds coming from the town to be able to do that. And so again, I can get you some information on that and help and see if either one of those types of examples might help here in the district.
That would definitely be very helpful. I also noticed that the Community College of New Hampshire system tied into the 65 by 25. Is there a way that the actual businesses speak with the community colleges? Actually, so when they do an internship, they actually introduce them to a local college so that they actually stay within state versus going afar?
So, okay, so let me make sure I'm understanding that question correctly. So there is, I, I know that the Community College System works very, very closely with the business community. They do their own outreach. In terms of the internships going the opposite direction, are you asking, are the, are the businesses encouraged to have a more robust relationship with the colleges for those internships?
Yeah, the colleges throughout the state. Because obviously, the key is, is that, you know, if a, if a young adult leaves the state for college, their likelihood of coming back is.
Right. Not for a while anyway, right, until they get sick of having 16 people in an apartment in Boston. Yes, and that's actually a big piece of my work as well. So as I, as time has gone on, my role has changed a little bit. And I, I don't want to say changed, but it's sort of deepened and broadened a little bit. But in terms of my outreach to businesses and speaking with employers, that is part of the ask that, you know, it's very common from what I've seen for, when I ask, you know, "Do you have, do you take on interns?" Many employers will say yes, but it's usually, you know, some employee's cousin's niece. You know, it's some, someone sort of loosely related to an employee. And so what, part of my ask is, if you are open to having interns, let's establish a more robust connection with the community college, with the local colleges, with any college in the state that has a program that would be relevant so that they can have a pipeline of students coming through. And once they have that relationship, like you said, the, the professors then know this is somebody that I can talk to in the business community. And then you're more likely, like you said, to have those students stay. That's a great question. Yes.
Thanks. I have more, but I'll let others ask questions first.
Anyone else? Andy?
So, again, thanks for coming. This is really good. So you, you mentioned up there that, that part of the relationship is working with community colleges with Running Start and Dual. How, how do you encourage, do you encourage the community colleges to reach out to the schools? Do you work with the schools to reach out? I mean, sort of, how is it? Because we have some of that in, in Merrimack and other districts I've seen. But how do you increase that and make it more, more, more frequently?
That's a great question. So the, my point person for all the dual enrollment and Running Start is actually through the Community College System. So it's somebody that's high-level Community College System that is absolutely well-aware of the need. And they have their own team that's doing the outreach. So that's not something that I'm doing personally. It's something that if I am talking with a school district, I bring it up. And if they're not aware of it, I can share that information or that contact. I guess the, the one piece of that that I will say I am kind of keeping track of, or the Workforce Accelerator is keeping track of, is we have metrics. And I'm happy to share this with you if you're interested. But we have metrics, the Center for Public Policy Studies, which of course is closing. I don't know if you're aware of that, but they're, they're closing this month. But they had been our, our data partner. And the Charitable Foundation worked very, very closely with them to put together a few, a few pages worth of specific points of data that we wanted to track as part of the Workforce Accelerator. One of those being the dual enrollment. So we have in Running Start programming. So we know where we were at a year ago, and we have interim targets, which means that we are going to be tracking that between now and 2025 to make sure that we're on track with increasing the number. In terms of boots on the ground, I don't have details on how they're reaching out, only that I, I know they do have a team that reaches out, and I try to encourage whenever I can.
It would be good to understand, and maybe we, I don't know how we get the data, but we, when you think of Running Start, a lot of times it's based on an academic need or whatever. The question is, can you make it be more on need of where the workforce is, is reduced or less or whatever? So you can help to build up an area. Because it's, it's easy to say, a school can say, you know, "We've got a lot of kids that want to take advanced calculus class. Let's, let's team up with NCC, for example." But if there's something that the college says I have a sort of a deficiency in, do they reach out to the schools to say, "Hey, look, we've got this opportunity"?
That's a great question, and I will have to follow up with them because I'm not sure they are doing that. I think it's more, yeah, based on what the schools are telling them and their students are interested in.
Sort of that conduit from, directly from school into something that's. I mean, we hear a lot of times that kids go to college and they, they start off the couple of years just sort of taking the baseline classes. If we can get somebody focused right in high school to a particular area, even at the community college level, which I think is a great starting point.
Absolutely. Yeah. And as, you know, on that point too, it's been very, very nice. And I know that historically, there has been, and I almost, I'm not sure I should say this out loud, but I think it's sort of well-known, that the Community College System and the university system hasn't always played well together. And they really are now. You know, I started, just as I said, just over a year ago. And the communications between the two are so fantastic. And they're trying to create more of those pathways. So as you say, a starting point, you know, when I was in the classroom, which I've been out of the classroom for 10 years now, but when I was teaching, it was really very, very common for me to say, "You don't think that college is attainable? Well, here, take a few classes," like you said, "just a few random classes over at the Community College System and work your way up." They're now trying to be, as they are onboarding new students, very deliberate in that career planning piece and also showing the different paths from an associate's to a bachelor degree. But also saying, "Hey, you can start off by taking X number of courses, and then you can transfer." And they have transfer agreements in place where you, you know, one-stop shopping. You, you apply once, you're in, you know, so you can kind of go through the entire four years. So there are, I, I feel like they're, they're making strides in that, that piece. So you're right, is a critical component of it and that they could, they could be more deliberate in the way that they're, they're offering those types of Running Start courses to start with. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Mike's going on to round two.
One of the things that you'd mentioned is soft skills. And I'm, I'm wondering if you can actually share what those soft skills are to the communities? Because it's something that's come up quite a bit.
Absolutely, yes. So I will start by saying the, the ability to show up on time is the one that I hear the most, closely followed by the, the knowing when to put the phones away. And I could share lots and lots of horror stories about interviewees who are showing up and taking out their phones in the middle of the interview and texting. I've had multiple employers tell me about that. So for anybody listening, put your phone away at interviews. But, but more, you know, team players, the ability to work on a team, to communicate well, just basic math and reading skills and ability to, when I say communicate, I guess it's not just communicate verbally, but also via email. I mean, that's, a lot of people don't know how to do that very well in a professional manner, memo style, that sort of thing. But really, anything that is, the, sort of what we would consider maybe those, those basics that you learn when you first start out working. I think what's happening is time goes on, we're seeing more and more students who are not necessarily getting that first job in high school. They're, they're kind of putting that off, maybe building up their resume for college or beyond, for career. And so that, those soft skills, the, you know, the show up on time and, and work well and hard worker and just know how to communicate, they're not learning those skills at that first job. And so I've actually heard from employers that they're getting employees who are starting even after college, who have never had a first job, which is just different from when I was going through school and when I was growing up and getting those skills kind of embedded in our work. So I think that that's really what they're looking for.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up because I think it's, it's good for the community to actually hear that because, you know, the actual events and clubs and everything like that that are actually after school help to actually strengthen a lot of that, those soft skills. I know that we have an individual down here that is part of the robotics team. And that's, that's not only, obviously, the science, but it's beyond that, the mechanical and stuff like that.
The team building. And is that through the, that's the first program? Could be fantastic. They're doing a great job. Nice.
So I do have one other question. After reviewing the BIA website, after getting the packet, one thing that I wanted to bring up and actually get a little bit better explanation was, one of your fiscal, your priorities, I guess, is that it states that your support passage of a constitutional amendment to allow the state to target educational aid. What does that mean?
Oh, that's a good question. So I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to bow out of that one a tiny bit. My role is actually not, not policy-based at all. So there is someone in my office who could absolutely answer that question for you. I know that we have, over time, the BIA has changed the way that they're approaching education and the, the support of it. And this is, again, directly aligned with the needs and the ask of the work, the business community as it's a business-based organization. This past year, I know that they, they supported all of the funding for the, for higher ed. I don't know historically what that has been, but anything that's on the website would be from past policy. And I, truth be told, I don't do.
I definitely think I would, I'd like a follow-up, maybe explanation of that just because it's concerning the way it's written. It might be.
Because it sounds as though it could align with like SV193 and that sort of thing, right? And I, and I know that we are not.
And it could not be, but it's just the way it's written.
Right. And we're not actually supporting that, just so that I can be clear on that. But I don't know what the, what the background is on that one. I apologize.
I appreciate it.
I completely understand why that would be a stressful question, a stressful thing to read though.
Thank you for all your.
Of course.
Any other questions? So on that note, we definitely. Any other questions? So on that note, uh, we definitely have a lot of, you know, I think, discussions at this table, and college and career readiness is on repeat here. And I think that it's so important that, you know, what your organization fosters as far as getting kids ready for college and career readiness, just in the way they are presenting themselves, is very important. And I think something you mentioned in January at the NHSBA is, so many kids choose their college without ever knowing what the job of that major really feels like. And I think that was something that resonated with me, and that's exactly what my, um, why I'm here to bring you here.
Sure.
Um, because I think that kind of, you know, think about all those kids that changed majors three times before graduation and took classes that just determined that was not their, their goal. Um, I have a master's degree in that myself, actually. Uh, but, on that note, you know, definitely is, uh, something where, when college is such a valuable resource, funding is such a, a challenge, you know, in, you know, getting a college education, making sure you're focusing your, um, your collegiate experience and your, you know, career readiness experience on what's gonna get you, um, something that's gonna sustain you in a happy way for the rest of your life. So this is exactly, that, that, that really, you know, drove that, that, uh, desire for you to come tonight. And I think that you definitely have some resources that we can leverage, even without having, um, a dedicated resource in our guidance department.
Right, right.
So I think there's definitely more to come, and it gives us something to really think about as we're going into our next fiscal year.
Yeah, wonderful. Well, thank you again for inviting me.
And thank you for coming very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And we're on to, oop, the lights. They're back. Item number four, which is the update on the District Mental Health Committee with a focus on social-emotional learning skills curriculum. And I invite to the table, uh, from the Mental Health Committee, Julie DeLuca, Assistant Principal at Thornton's Ferry, and John Fabrizio, Director of Student Services. So, thank you and welcome.
Well, good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you for having us, um, to the table to talk a little about some updates on our Mental Health Committee. Um, as you will see by, uh, both Julie and I, my presentation, um, we've been up to a lot, and I think we'll start there. And we've been, um, um, far-reaching in some of our, our committee's work, and it's been a, I'll say, a pleasure to work, uh, hand-in-hand with Julie in, in doing this work. Um, she's a great leader in her, in her own right and organized, and, um, we've made, um, many gains over the past year, um, working with this committee, and I just have to commend, um, all of those dedicated professionals we work with every day, because they really are committed to this effort in our district, and to Marjorie Mark, um, with their continued support to let us go forward and, and have the time to meet and plan and, um, touch base with them to say, are we on the right track and are we moving forward where we want to be? So, again, thank you to start off with. Um, so our committee has moved along with, um, Implementation Science Continuum for Initial Exploration, um, and Pre-Implementation Strategies, and now we're on stage three, the implementation process. We have integrated our Project Grow, um, grant and the work we've done with Project Grow into our multi-tiered system framework and our system of care and learning supports across our district and beyond into our community. Our subcommittees are established, and they are, they are each, um, have action plans involved, and they began to work, and we are developing each of those subcommittees to move forward and do some more outreach, and we've began that. Some of our continued, continued accomplishments so far, we have , um, really been a, an influence on our last August Academy as a mental health group, and we provided that professional development and supported our district with keynote speakers, both Cassie Yakli and Adam Steins, and both of them really led off our school year with a focus on mental health. We've held, um, two so far K-12 collaboration days where we've had our helpers come together. And we're planning for a third in May, and we will, um, bring in Cassie Yakli again to work with that group and continue to grow, um, that, that, um, base of knowledge. And I think we've, uh, done those, those first two items really with our grant funding through Project Grow. Parent outreach, uh, we have Screenagers coming up. Um, this is a little plug on, on, um, April 17th at the high school and the little, at the high school and Little Theater. We have begun, um, working with NAMI in partnership, and Julia and I have met several times with them and their leadership to develop a outreach group for mental health in our, in our area. We have a parent speaker forum, um, that's coming up, um, in, in the later months of the year. We also will be attending the Merrimack Safeguard presentation tomorrow, at, um, tomorrow evening. Again, I believe six o'clock is start time, Julie? Yes. Another plug. And, uh, we'll, we'll be there and present in talking about kind of the work we've done as, as a committee. And then we are, we've been attending our, um, transition meetings for our, for our middle school and, um, and for our sixth grade as they, they go forward and kind of telling about our efforts in the district. We continue to train our leaders in the district in working with our leadership group and our helpers and our department head. Dr. Yakli will be back through the rest of the spring. She'll be back, I think, two times to come in and to work with various groups and continue our own learning and our own planning and our own system of care. And we have refined along the way this year our, um, at-risk-and-suicide self-home harm protocol. And, um, one of the things in the feedback that we had for having this in place for a few years was our ability to communicate with parents. And we've developed a nice brochure that when, um, we have to enact and do a risk assessment of students, we have, um, information to parents about where to go next and how to get help, and then, and the teams helped develop that. Again, another little side group that we have going that relates right back to our mental health group is we have really dove into collaborative problem-solving, collaborative discipline, and a different approach to look at things. And, uh, we have a, a monthly, uh, book study group that's, uh, reading a, a book called Better Than Carrots and Sticks. And it's all about collaborative interactions of staff members when it comes to dealing with student and, uh, behavior. So, and again, we have, um, had meetings with the high school department heads, and we are moving on with some social-emotional learning and training within each of our buildings through our staff meetings. That's within our district. Then we're expanding a little bit and to move on. Um, we have consulted with, um, the district, the regional, our regional state partners, and in the South-Central region, we provided you with a handout to some of the work we've done recently presenting to the Superintendent's Association. We've also been forward and started to collect some data, um, within our four districts that are partnered together with Hudson, Londonderry, Salem, and ourselves. And now we are looking into how do we refine that collection to even go a little broader by the end of the year. We continue to work with the Office of Student Wellness and partner with them. We are on the, Julie, myself, and the Project Grow Steering Committee, which we have monthly phone calls and are involved in that. We've presented both to the, uh, Special Ed Director, as I said, Special Ed Directors across the state, and also to the superintendents. And, um, we're involved with work with the P and Health Curriculums, the Wellness Committee, and again, Merrimack Safeguard tomorrow night, six o'clock, we'll also be presenting there. So, um, that's really where we've been in some of the updates. It's a pretty inclusive list. And, um, really where it leads to is I'm gonna turn to Julie and let her talk a little about the social-emotional learning component and kind of where we're going with that.
Thank you, John, and I too have enjoyed our partnership and, again, wanted to speak to the work, not only of our District Mental Health Committee, but many educators, uh, in our district that are committed and leaders in our district that are committed to making sure that our children have the soft skills they need, thanks to Sarah for highlighting it. You gave this nice segue to our committee, but making sure that our students have the soft skills they need to be successful in their careers or in college. So, many years ago, we came forward and to your wonderful support at the time to say, go ahead and do this work. We're now almost, what, three and a half years in, and, uh, one of our, uh, committee members made a comment, and our goal has always been to really develop a system of care and learning supports. And it was never about filling gaps and holes with a position or with a new tool. It was really about that system of care. And the Mental Health, uh, Committee Member who's been on the committee for years, uh, indicated, you know what? I think we are in our system of care right now. And so, um, when you look at the Implementation Science Continuum, it will be a continual. It's not, this is not something that's going away. It's embedded. It is part of who we are. And we have to thank all of you for supporting us in, in the early days and believing in this work. So today, I want to go back to something we discussed after collecting data and listening and studying the problem in year one. And if you recall, uh, one of the biggest insights that we found from collecting the data and speaking to others was that most of our support, 80% of the helper support, helpers again, being school counselors, school psychologists, behavior specialists, school nurses, folks that are in the PAST program, educators that are working with kids with emotional disabilities, the helpers that we've come to know and to define ourselves. 80% of our time is working with students in Tier Two and Tier Three that had more targeted and intensive needs. What was clearly lacking was Tier One core instruction. How are we teaching students the skills, the soft skills, if you, if Sarah would say, the learning skills on how to go about being ready, whether it be in a classroom or in a job or in the career? And so that has been something that has always sat with us, and we knew at some point in time we would need to, to embark on that and to look at, look at that. That's also in line with our District RTI Committee work and these work being done in the schools around Tier One, Two, and Three Instruction. So all of this is aligned. We also go back to the work and the research that many of you have read and know to be true, and the research around how social-emotional learning contributes to academic achievement. And there's been numbers that have recently been shared that, uh, students that we focus on social-emotional learning and instruction can result in 11% increase in academic achievement. So we know we need to pay attention to this. So, finally, and again, going back to something Naomi, you said to me, to us many years ago that has stuck in my mind, is that this work continues to get more complex than it is simpler. And that's, and that's okay. And I think we've embraced that. Uh, and so we're not at juncture to really look at how are we providing students with that social skills and learning explicit instruction. Speaking again, how do we get our students ready for the business world, for their jobs, in cooperation and in decision-making, in problem-solving, in working as teams, in communicating? How are we preparing our students? We know the research says we need explicit, explicit instruction in that area. We're ready to embark on a, an evaluation plan, and we'd like to thank the members of the District Math Committee. You would say math? Social skills? How does that relate? They provided a model for us that we're using to evaluate two social-emotional learning programs. We modified the math evaluation rubric, and it includes areas such as assessment. We'll be looking at assessments, both formative and summative and benchmark assessments for all these learning programs, for the, um, social skills, learning skills programs. We will looking at what type of differentiated instruction is provided, what type of parent and homeschool communication, and what professional development is provided to teachers. So very much similar to the categories and the work that we looked at in reviewing math curriculums and math programs. We're in your packet. You've seen a framework from CASL, and I just want to pay attention, it's this right here, if you've all had a chance to look at that. And CASL stands for Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. In 2013, they published a guide, a research guide around the competencies and what programs are research-based in this area. We're using that as well as Merrimack Givens and criteria to look closely at two programs that we would like to evaluate. We're in process with one of those programs, and we will continue with that with the second program into next year. Our goal is to be able to present to all of you and to the leadership team next May with a recommendation that we have around what program we would recommend for the Merrimack School District. During that time, we hope you will have us back here to the board and with the public so that we can continue to update you all on our findings with this evaluation. In addition, we continue to be a leader in the state, as John spoke about, and in our regional area, not only around our efforts of a system of care, but in looking at social skills instruction. We've piloted a program for several years at Thornton's Ferry, and it has gone very effectively. We've received tremendous around apparent feedback and positive feedback from, from families about the work that we're doing and how they're seeing it in the home front. And we also hosted, uh, Hudson, and again, our collaborative partners, Hudson, Salem, and Londonderry in hosting them in our work around social-emotional skills instruction, and also introduce them to some of the vendors that we look to be working and partnering with. So, that's a quick snapshot. I hope, uh, I was able to at least give you a broad view of some of the work that we will continue to do and that we can continue to come back and share with you some of the work and also to get your insights about some of the work that we're doing around social-emotional learning skills.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Cindy?
Thanks so much for coming tonight. It's incredible work, um, that the team is doing around this very important issue, and I think it ties in not only with the development of the state and the students', you know, trajectory throughout their lives, but, um, just all in all, I think it's, it's really important work that you're doing and, and you're approaching it. I'm really impressed with the way that you've been approaching it, um, and not rushing through it, but trying to find out what's the logical next step as you embark on this journey. Um, but one thing I did want to ask was, I recall, um, there was a, a grant from the state, or there was, I wonder if you could tell me a little bit about that or where we are, um, with the use of that, or, or what you're learning from and what that grant is opening up, you know, for the committee and some of your experiences so far, or, or where we stand with it in general.
Thank you. And, and thank you for very much giving us an opening to talk about that. As John said, and I'll certainly have John weigh in, uh, we both are members of not only the Project Grow and reaching out to all the other districts and partnering with all the other regions around that. Uh, we all are also on the Steering Committee, so we're helping to influence this work as it starts to take part in other parts of the state. We have, in addition to free access and resources to Dr. Cassie Yakli and other experts in the field, so when they come and do PD in our district, work with teachers, coach teachers, that is all free, because we are a participant in the Project Grow Grant, which is a four-year grant. In addition, we have also in partnership with the DOE and, uh, the Special Education, uh, Group at the state, we've been given $50,000. We have a budget for that. We've used some of the money for some of the professional development that we continue to do. We've used some of the money to support our Collaboration Days. We have money allocated and budgeted for the social-emotional skill program. It won't cover everything, but it will give us some funds to cover, uh, a potential purchase of a program and supplies and resources that we could use in support of a social-emotional learning skills curriculum. Um...
Yeah, and I'll add that it's also given us some, um, as I said, we started our subcommittee work, i- and one of those subcommittees is parent outreach. And, um, Screenagers is, is one of the things that, that, that screen, yeah. Screenagers, thank you. Screenagers is one of the, uh, things that's coming up again on April 17th. Thank you. Um, and on April 17th, that will be something that's sponsored basically by the Project Grow Grant, was allowed us to be able to bring it in, and we didn't have to charge parents or families, because that was one of the things we were able to do. Um, also with that, we're doing some, um, like any good campaign or anything that gets out there, we need to do some outreach. We need to do some, some, uh, literature and do some, uh, do some trifles that we have to present at these, uh, different events that come up, such as transition nights and things like that. We're using some of the funds to, um, help us purchase some of those materials, to help it more professional and, and get the word out to people and try to do some more parent outreach with that. So some of the other things we're doing with the funding. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And I would say, you know, as time goes on, if you need anything from this board, you know, please let us know, you know, where we support the work that you're doing, and just, you know, raise your hand, um, if we can help in any way.
Naomi, then Michael?
Thank you for coming. Um, I wanted to say one thing and then ask something else. I wanted to, among many other commendations I could say, because this is such an incredibly important topic, particularly what you talked about tonight. I really like the way that you're, um, successfully avoiding the loophole of stereotyping crisis intervention into all this. You're really creating something that is truly comprehensive across the schools and areas of need, especially highlighted in your, your talk of Tier One and those pieces. And so, uh, congratulations. That can be hard to stick true to when pressures mount, and it's marvelous to see. Now, you talked about the choo, the, the choice of measure and curriculum. I'm wondering, you may not have... I'm wondering, you may not have the answer now, but I would like very much to know how that gets chosen as that happens and what process and what's looked at along the way, both professionally and also from the perspective of seeing what happens in the district.
In addition, Naomi, we would love your insight in that process as well, as well as any other member of the board.
And we respect Naomi's background in that very area for her professional life as well, so we do lean on her academic prowess. So definitely when you're getting those insights, we also sit at attention, so, so thank you. Michael, I think you're next.
Thank you for actually touching on the community outreach and actually sending information to the parents because I think that's a very beneficial, that was going to be one of my questions, so thank you for covering that already. I did have a question, this tier, the tier one, obviously there are social skills that children have to learn. Are those social skills aligned with being in, you know, kindergarten through fourth grade or are they actually stuff that should be, should have been learned prior to and they just need to, they just didn't learn it from their parents? I'm just trying to understand like where that tier one kind of fits into their, their growth and their, the timing that you actually receive them.
So each of the social skills instruction is developmentally appropriate. And so the lessons, for example, will change from pre-K to kindergarten to a first, second grader, third grader, and fourth grader. Just like we do with the academics, the standards and the competencies change for a student who's reading at least at first grade and how that looks different for a fourth grader that's reading. That's also true when the development of social skills. For example, when we teach problem solving in first grade, we may really work on just the one thing, identifying what the problem is and the steps, maybe two steps for a first grader. When we work with a fourth grader and then a middle schooler, that becomes more complex. And so we may get into more complex steps. We may also enter in how you can infer and empathy and other skills that are just like some of the skills for learning in math and reading. When students are ready and available, we can teach those skills. So the benefit of having a program that's evidence-based, we know it's appropriate, there's a scope and sequence, there are assessments, there's data we're collecting and looking at to ensure that our instruction meets the needs of our students. If students are not vetting fitting from explicit social skills instruction, then we also know we need to do tier three and tier two supports. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I guess my concern was that the children, we were, we were trying to get kids up to speed versus actually being aligned with where they are as the age like that. I guess my, my bigger concern is that in today's society, some parents are not taking the necessary steps to adequately provide children with guidance before they get to school. So that was kind of my, my thing, but it sounds like that's not part of the, part of this, this part here, so.
I think, here's what I do know, parents and families are doing the best they can. And whether it is preparing their child to be a reader or preparing their child to be a good communicator. And so our job is to give each student what they need in all areas.
I think Mark also wants to weigh in on that question.
So, and I've spoken to John and Julie about this, so what I'm going to say is I'm owning it and they can disavow it if I'm not saying the right thing. But, you know, I don't want, and I don't think that John and Julie either want to have this be confused with, you know, like kind of trying to take over the role of parenting because parents, as Julie said, are, you know, really they do a good job and really good work and, and, and so what this is, is the way I've come to think of this is, in Meramec, we are really trying to do things a little differently sometimes, like for instance, trying to develop a culture of inquiry in our classrooms. When you have a culture of inquiry and you're trying to increase student voice, let's just say as an example, there's a way to behave in that culture that's different from like years ago when you were taught, you know, raise your hand and line up and sit in rows and so on. So when we are trying to engage students in a culture where their voice and their work is important and their collaboration is important, there's a way to engage one with the other. And those things are explicitly taught, ways to be respectful to others, ways to wait to listen and to honor the thing that a person is saying, to ask probing questions, did I understand you right? Did I? Those are some of the kinds of things that this work is helping students to, to achieve, to understand, to learn, in addition to, you know, other, other things just about, you know, social emotional wellness. But that would be how I would sort of link that work to some of the larger objectives that we're trying to be about in our, in our district, which is different from, you know, not even that long ago.
So just, that's exactly what I was kind of looking for and I appreciate that. That's a great explanation. Thank you.
Cindy?
And if I recall, kind of going back to the, some of the beginning conversations, I think it was about, and again, correct me if I'm wrong or I have the incorrect recollection, but it was more about looking at the resources that we have and how we are spending them and trying to be more proactive so that we can get to that tier one versus always having to react to behavior problems, things like that. So with the idea being the more that we can proactively move resources to tier one, hopefully the less we have to act reactive because we're teaching those students how to be able to advocate for themselves, how to be able to, a variety of techniques, right, that you're looking into and you're working as part of, let's say, this overall curriculum. Is that, is that correct? Is that?
That was very well said, Cindy, and very, very good. I'll have you sit next to us next time, I think, in doing that.
Send them up tomorrow night for Safeguard, okay?
I think the important thing that we talked about too is just like in, in the parallel to reading in a lot of ways too, or arithmetic, I really think that once you know at that basis in which taught in the classroom, when you go to reinforce in the tier two and tier three things, you know it was taught explicitly and you're building off something. Right now, we currently stay, sit right now, we don't have that system-wide. And we talked about a system of care. You know, as Thornton's, Thornton's doing some pilot right now, we're doing something a little bit different at the other buildings. We're not systematic about it. We're not evaluating system-wide right now. So I think that when we know what our tier one is, as in math and arithmetic and we know what those are, we will know on a social emotional level too and with our curriculum, what we've taught and we're there. So we can jump off at those kids that struggle. We have a jumping off point now to say that's a very consistent tier two now, which builds a consistent tier three and it helps us get there to do that.
I did have one question on something you mentioned very early on, and that's that you were talking about suicide prevention and that a brochure was developed. And I know that you mentioned it's something you provide to parents when you feel that they need those, those resources. Is it something where if a parent needs a resource that they can get it from the district that's on their website, does Safeguard have a copy of it for their page and site? Or is it just a paper copy?
Right now, we certainly could put it up on the website. Right now, it's usually, it's in the situation, in the one-on-one situation when we're having conversations with parents, it's something to say, here's some resources for you if you choose to take them and it's what it is. We could certainly put it up and make it available. We've done one for each building, so it's very specific to who the people in the building to contact is and really where to go for the supports and do that. And also I mentioned too that we're, we're connecting more with NAMI than we have through our work and I think that that's some of our hope to start, really helping parents get more involved and working with them too if they need it.
Excellent. So that was definitely something that we always take away from the youth risk behavior survey, those, those statistics definitely have a, they stand out. And we want to make sure that whatever resources are available, that we're aware of them as well, so, but Safeguard's obviously where those reports get reviewed on a regular basis with us. So of course the tie is there. Andy?
Well, I'm going to chime in on that a little bit. I'm not really sure that Safeguard is clicking on all cylinders when it comes to documenting and publishing things like this. Our website's pretty stale, I think. My suggestion is that, and maybe this goes to the communication committee, I'm not sure, maybe we as a district can have like a resource that parents can go to in each building specifically that would have this as well as other things, whether it's online or where to get it or whatever. But I think I'd like the district to be in control a little bit of the resources that each building's parents have accessibility to, be something I think to maybe look at. Safeguard, I don't know, I know that we review and we talk about it, but the website up to date is and that kind of stuff, I'm not sure whether that's as relevant as it was a couple of years ago.
That's probably true, but I just want to say that, so there's, there's an obvious intersection between conversations about substance misuse and mental health. However, Meramec Safeguard's mission really explicitly isn't about mental health, it's about substance use, not misuse. So notwithstanding that what, Andy, you said about the website is true, it could be much more updated, but I wouldn't necessarily think that publishing the suicide protocol would be the purview of Meramec Safeguard. Right? So we can populate it with more things and better things that relate to the mission of Meramec Safeguard, but I just, I, there's like a conflation that we have to be careful about there.
Right. Things that parents in buildings would have an interest in knowing or getting resources to, I think we as a district need to make sure those are available through our, you know, avenues, whatever those are.
Through the district.
Correct. Through the district.
Yes, totally.
Naomi, here's your hand up.
And without at all saying that I disagree with sharing information, I think publishing almost anything is a good idea. I wonder whether some of the resources that we created here that you're talking about were created with the assumption that they'd be talked through with someone as opposed to simply being put online as is. It might be, need some modification for that.
Well, right, I mean, the, the resource could be, here's a trifle that you can look at, or here's where, who to call or who to send mail to to get more. And you have a little bit of intelligence, I guess, around it is something you could do, so.
Definitely. But I think the biggest thing is usually there's just a quick, you know, what, what we deal with is obviously as a district is, you know, seeing the data, knowing the data, what resources can we provide and not, you know, and have it available to them. So if it's something that does work, and again, not seeing the brochures, it's asking a question, definitely not sending a directive, but you know, is there a way to get the right resource where if someone's checking on a Sunday night, they can, you know, and their, guidance counselor's not available, you know, where can they go to just even take first steps as far as getting a basic resource? Definitely not looking to get, you know, the solution in a brochure. It's, it's a bigger problem than that, but something, but if that work does create those materials, that's why I think it would be appropriate. So excellent, so that was my question. So are there any other questions of the district mental health committee or comments? Marge?
This is not a question, it's a comment. It's called a note of appreciation. And I just want to say that John and Julie have done yeoman work. You can see what's been going on in district. And in addition, the work that's gone in the South Central Region is to be commended as well because in all of my time in the South Central Region, we have never partnered on any topic as important as this one. And just pulling four districts together and getting them all on the same page and getting them to deal with a topic such as this, meaning even coming up with common language to all be on the same page, coming up with what are we going to do to track data? How are we going to share that? And so this effort is going to expand beyond the four districts in the South Central Region. We have great hope that it will be all of the South Central Region and then the intention is to take it to the four other regions of the state. This is work really the DOE is not capable of doing. It doesn't have the capacity to do it. And we think that this is really going to resonate throughout the state and it is because of the leadership of these two people that we are where we are. So it needs a note of commendation.
Thank you and very well noted. So thank you again. Your presentations always give us more to think about and, and we know that we're in good hands, so thank you so much. We are on to item number five, which is the request to conduct a teacher survey related to students' social emotional learning skills and their reading performance. So I invite to the table Thornton's Ferry principal, Bridie Bellmeyer, and educator, Kristy Jenkins. Welcome and thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us this evening. That was a perfect segue. And again, I too compliment John and Julie for their leadership and the way in which they kind of set the stage for our query of you this evening, specifically the work at the state level that's happening, the district level, and they spoke briefly to some of our goals at the site-based level, which this young lady to my right, Ms. Kristy Jenkins, will be speaking to about in a little bit more detail. Kristy is in her fifth year as an educator in the Meramec School District. She came to us as a second grade teacher for three years at Thornton's Ferry and she is in her second year as a special educator. What I so appreciate about Kristy is, if you've heard of the term gritty, somebody who has significant grit and perseverance, Kristy attacks and approaches problems as a student advocate in a way that I find very tenacious and quite impressive. She's a strong collaborator with therapists, case managers, classroom teachers, parents, building administration, behavior specialists, school counselor. If there's a problem she can't figure out, she kind of deconstructs it like a Rubik's Cube and I so appreciate that she is to the core passionate about student advocacy. So she is here this evening to ask that you please consider her request for a research proposal that I will let her speak in more detail to at this time.
Well, thank you, Bridie. That was very wonderful to hear, so I really appreciate those kind words. So thank you so much for having, for the opportunity to come here today to present my research with all of you. It is a wonderful setting and I think the perfect night to come and request that I conduct research to help identify a student's social and emotional performance. As I sat back there listening to the dialogue, I became more empowered and more passionate about developing a better understanding of the resources and tools that we have to continue to support students' needs. I am currently completing my master's in curriculum and instruction with a concentration in reading. And throughout this course, I am working on developing as a researcher, implementing to products and experiences, as well as demonstrating a leadership role in the area of curriculum and instruction. As I began my process, I really wanted to focus on the area of reading because this is something that I really enjoy teaching and it's also my concentration in my master's program. I began asking questions such as, what is impacting a student's reading performance? And how can we support those students that are reading below grade level? Research has proven that there is a correlation between a student's academic performance and their social emotional learning skills. As Julie and John, I'm so sorry, as Julie and John had stated, CASL, which is an organization that is promoting social and emotional learning as an, as an important part of education, they define social emotional learning as obtaining the knowledge and skills to understand emotions, to set goals, to have and feel empathy, to have positive relationships, and to make good decisions. These are important skills that will help students be lifelong learners. I determined that my research question will be, do students reading below grade level present with a lagging social emotional skill that may be impacting their reading performance? In order to answer my research question, I needed a sample size and this needed to be students that are reading below grade level. For my research proposal, I will be asking sixteen second grade students at Thornton's Ferry who are reading below, two or more benchmarks below, to participate in my research. The reason that I chose second grade students is because I work on the, that is the grade level professional learning team that I am a part of. We use data to identify students that are reading below grade level. A second grade student at this point in the year should be able to process and retell easy chapter books, bring background knowledge to new reading, recognize themes across text, read fluently and with expression, as well as use strategies to solve unknown words. I would like the second grade classroom teachers to complete an assessment for this population of students that will help identify if those students are presenting with a lagging social and emotional skill. As stated, Thornton's Ferry participates in the second step program, which provides tier one classroom social and emotional instruction. There are four units that are taught in this program, skills for learning, empathy, Skills for learning, empathy, emotional management, and problem solving skills. I am asking for the teachers to complete the Devro Student Strengths Assessment Second Step Edition. This assessment is modified to the Second Step Program, and it uses positive language and seeks to help identify student strengths. Some examples of the questions that are asked on this questionnaire, and the questionnaire is also in the, in the packet that you guys have received, are in the past four weeks, how often did the child take an active role in learning? How often did the child express concern for others? And how often did the child stay calm when faced with a challenge? The results from the assessment directly align with the four units that are taught in the Second Step Program. I will work closely with the second grade classroom teachers to analyze the data. And the results will identify each student's strengths, as well as if there are areas that are in need of instruction. This information will help inform the student's targeted social and emotional learning instruction if needed. It's important to note that all student data is confidential, and this research is not being published. The results findings will be presented at the District Mental Health Committee. I'm hoping that providing targeted social and emotional learn, uh, learning instruction will help students' reading performance improve as well. I would like to now offer this opportunity for any questions or concerns.
Naomi?
Thank you very much, both for the interesting topic and for bringing it to the district. I have some tough questions, so before I ask those, I want to kind of preface by saying that I like this very much. So the process is tough, but my, I like it, and that's where I'm going. I think that there are two things that may be becoming interwoven here that may need to be separated. One is permission to administer the survey, and the other is permission to conduct research, because those are two very different things. And the request to conduct research requires all kinds of things that aren't here. IRB, a whole variety of pieces. The form has all kinds of student identifying information that would require that it be coded and then anonymized. It, it's complicated, as I'm sure you've come across in your classes. That said, using instruments as part of the curriculum and feeding into the curriculum is your purview as a teacher. And using it in that way is certainly something that happens in schools all the time and can be an exemption from IRB if it's something that's used in the school. So I think that the first thing we're going to have to do is tease these to apart because you are publishing it. The fact that it's going to a paper for class means it's being published. But it's also feeding the curriculum directly, and it's going to benefit those students as part of that curriculum. So could you talk a little bit about how it would be possible for you to separate those without sabotaging your classwork?
Are you asking to separate the conducting of the research and?
What is it that you, you need to report as part of the class?
I get to implement and report on whatever it is that I really would seek to find beneficial for students. And so my thought process, and I know that this is your area of strength and you're a professor in the area of research, correct? And so I would love any insights or recommendations that you have going forth. I think that would be an awesome experience to have. I lost confidence in your thoughts.
Yeah, did you get it again, or could I, should I bring it back on?
Can you?
Yeah. So I, I want this from my own personal perspective here to happen, but I see things that might stop it from the way that it's been presented. So my question is, apart from the boosts and the goals for the students, what do you need for the class?
I need to implement to products and experiences that improve instruction and curriculum.
And what do you need to report back? Is the data set necessary, is really what I'm asking?
No.
Okay, so if you can separate the data set out of the assignment, and what we're talking about is the survey for in-house student benefits, then I would suggest we talk about that as opposed to about the research itself, which isn't really research because you're not presenting that at all. Does that make sense to everyone? Can I? No? Should I say it again? So if, if this is a research project, we'd have, I'd have to say no. Because, not because there's anything wrong with the idea, but because the safeguards that research needs aren't in place. But there are a lot of instruments that are used in schools as part of instruction, and we don't have to approve each one as if it's research. In which case, we're simply looking to see if these benefit for the students. So I think we need to first see which of those we're, we've got right now.
Andy?
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to her, okay? So when I looked at this, a couple of things struck out at me. First, the wording about where the data would be shared was a little murky here and there because it used the word parents, and it wasn't clear it was a parent to student necessarily, right? It was where the branch was. But the other thing that struck me is, is a parent going to be surprised if they get a permission slip knowing that this is targeted to students that are underperforming in their reading capabilities? I mean, as an example, so, you know, by looking to try to pull, get permission to explicitly do research or, or sampling or ask questions of a group of students, is a parent going to be surprised by what you're asking? Would they, would they want to look, like the, the sample, the form that you've got that a teacher would use? You know, you're right, it has a lot of personal identifiable information and a lot of interesting questions here. Is a parent going to say, well, I'm going to get permission, but show me the questions you're going to ask and what data you're going to share, right? And so is that sort of what you're getting to?
Oh yeah, very much, and then other pieces. So for example, there's a parent consent, but there's no student assent. And when we're talking about research as opposed to curricular practice, then you need both and not just one. You, you need all kinds of things, but you don't need those if you're putting an instrument in place for the betterment of a class as part of standard curriculum.
And, yeah, and that is the area in which my project is working on improving instruction and curriculum that is applicable in the classroom.
So just to finish the thought, so what you're saying is, is that a teacher in a normal course of their teaching would know this about students within their class? They don't have to say who the student is or, or anything, but just to say, I know in my class there are students that show this characteristic or this trait or something like that, without needing to explicitly poll each individual one, having a sheet of data on each individual student.
Right, so for example, if I were working in a classroom and I noticed that a certain number of students had fine motor coordination difficulties, I wouldn't need to get research approval in order to look into, find out what specifically what challenges they were facing, talk with the parents, and then put and implement something across that group. I might need the consent of a group like this to use a particular protocol because I'm bringing a survey into the district. But it's not quite, it's action research as opposed to publishable research.
Got it.
So based on the responses you have, do you have any trepidation still?
I would ask one thing. I realize this would increase the time, but based on, on Andy's question too, would it be possible to administer this more widely rather than just to the selected students?
It is something we could consider. As a part of the program, we have a sample of the Devro Second Step Edition. So that is something that I could look into. But at this time, we have about twenty Devro assessments, so that would just be the next.
And they don't give those out very often.
Okay, Michael?
So trying to follow here, as it's presented to me, I've, I've concerns in regards to the way that the data is collected, so I, I would not agree to the actual request based on how it's written. However, also listening to Naomi, it sounds like this may not be needed. And my recommendation would be, if it's not approved, to go back to the administration to review and find out if that's the case. Is that? Because if it's a, if it's not a survey and it's more of an assessment done within the class, that's a different scenario than actually where the state laws fall, I believe.
I, I think we thought it important because it was a survey and you're working on a policy currently about a survey. And tonight, we were going to be about looking at a social, emotional learning skills continuum. So it made sense to put it before you. So I think to address what Naomi is saying, there is a, a difference perhaps between research, as you speak of it, and doing a survey that informs her class for the curriculum work. So I'd like to think somewhere in the middle lies the answer because she definitely needs to gather information and process it for her particular class. And I would like to think that we, the district, could help her in that quest.
So that, that's my, that's why I'm, like, I was looking at this. This is not something that you go up to the child and actually ask a question, and that's kind of how I see a, a survey, whereas I see this as being an assessment by an educator. So that's where I see the difference. So I don't see this being a.
That's who it's for. It is for the teacher.
Right, but I, I, I guess for me, a survey is that you give someone questions to answer, whereas this is not giving a child questions to answer, so therefore it's, doesn't fall under the survey. It's, it's.
But it's about the child.
But it's an assessment of the child and, and for educational purposes, so. I mean, e- even if it, I mean, if it was put forward as a survey, I don't feel comfortable with the private data that's actually collected on it, so.
Cindy?
So here are my thoughts. For the purpose of instruction as a school district, I believe that we collect data day in and day out as we continuously look to revise, to provide support, to provide individual support. So I think collecting the data in and of itself is not outside the scope of what we do as a district in our day-to-day work. Secondly, if we, I would like to be able to support the work in the school in a way that not only are we supporting the learning of our students and looking if there's a way and a connection to be able to do that, but I also feel a certain responsibility to our educators to be able to help them advance their learning, to further support the learning of our students. So there's that. Thirdly, if we can address the clarification and, well, thirdly, I think just being transparent with the parents, always going to that default is a good idea. And if a parent is willing to opt in, and we are willing, and we communicate to them, they opt in, and again, we can make it a positive learning experience for students and staff. I support it. The only thing then would to be able, for, for my eyes, would be able to clarify that distinction that Naomi had expressed is cleared. And then this would have my support. So as long as I feel that we have it addressed in the way that we ask the parents, that we're being transparent in what we're asking of the parents, then it has my support.
Yep, and I'm very much along the lines of what you're saying. And I think, you know, when I'm looking at the, the, the assessment that you're doing, I think regardless, you would have done that to help the child and be able to serve the child and their needs in the classroom. So if we said, you can't do this research paper, I would still hope you would do that, those assessments. Because I think they will give you the tools you need to be able to provide the outreach. But on the flip side, exactly what Cindy said, when you are able to take these courses and what you're experiencing in the classroom is designed to help you in these courses. And it's, it's like a natural progression for me that as a teacher who's looking to refine her craft with an advanced degree, that the classroom experience helps you to really get the most out of that, that advanced degree classroom experience. So with that, as long as I feel that the board can, you know, be comfortable with how it's being used, how it's being collected, and what we would do with it, I, I think this is exactly what we want to happen. We want you to be able to not only take those skills, but then share what you've learned and to help, you know, a non-special ed classroom teacher to be able to offer interventions to that child in, in a regular session, so. Where they can kind of, you know, differentiate instruction to be able to support that. So that's exactly what we're looking for. But on that note, yes, I, I mean, when you talk about opting in for parents and making sure parents are knowing how data's being used, that's great for them to know. You know, for what you're doing, it shows that, that you're taking a proactive approach to make sure that, you know, their child is being addressed. And so, I mean, I, I don't have a lot of concerns, but I think that based on the concerns there, how, I think as long as we can overcome them with a defined process, then, you know, I think we're good to go. Naomi, and then I think, Michael?
I can wait till after, Michael. What I'd like to do is suggest a motion that people might be able to refine in order to, to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Um, I will wait, I'll wait for your cue.
So I wanted to be clear, I'm very supportive of what you're trying to do, and I definitely appreciate the effort that you're doing in regards to not only bettering yourself, but in, in fact, actually bettering the community by doing that. So please don't take any vote in, in any other light. It's my concern is the actual personal data, and, and I think this is more of an assessment versus a survey. So I think even if it were to be voted no, I think there might be a way to actually get this done without, without that, so. Thank you.
Bridie, absolutely.
So, well, I appreciate just the thorough analysis and everyone weighing in on this, and I do understand your perspective on this. And what I would like to offer for consideration at this point in time is if Kristi and I could go back to her advisor and have the focus be curricular practice-based, because the tool itself, it is an assessment, and it actually says strengths assessment, not survey. And currently, it is our practice when administering any additional diagnostic assessment tool, whether it's speech and language or other, you know, math-related assessment tools, we would absolutely seek parent permission to do that. And we, it is embedded in our organic practices. So that's, what's different about this that's unique is it is a social, emotional assessment, which is not a current practice where our school is, is the only school piloting the Second Step Program. That's why we felt that this was the appropriate course of action to come before you and kind of state those intentions. But I think we can easily make revisions to be above board, let's just say. So it doesn't impact any IRB requirements.
Okay, and since I have you on the spot, and I know that we have this information because it's how we live day-to-day, I know the concern is about student data protection. I think that there are protocols in place throughout the district on all levels to make sure that student privacy is at the utmost of, of importance in every way we collect data and, and preserve data. That student privacy has always been considered paramount to, to how we go about doing business. And can you just talk a little bit about the kind, how that would be done in your school? I'll put Bridie on the spot, but if you have something to share, you can.
No, absolutely, and I think it's a, it's a pretty collaborative practice across the district. I can speak for the elementary levels at least, that in the way in which we collect and review data, it is, it's shared only with the pertinent parties of individuals that work directly with those children. If we're, if we're capturing data that requires a specific intervention, be devised over time. How we document that is initials to main, of the child to maintain privacy, you know, the privatization of, of that data. It's not housed in a place that other staff members have access to even review that in, in the building. So we do take great care and keeping of that. And of course, that's shared on a regular basis with parents, you know, not just upon their request, but as a part of how we're supporting students in, you know, our response to intervention or instruction. And it's just good practice that, that you've been looking at a variety of data points and not just summative data, whether it's conferring, data checklist, rubrics, you know, diagnostic tools like the one we're talking about today. Our educators across district have been trained in what is confidentiality practices around data collection, and, and I think they do a really excellent job of maintaining student privacy when it comes to that.
Thank you, and I have a question to put you on the spot, Kristi. Because classes are usually not open-ended, you know, things. So with that, I always ask when a research project comes to us, you know, what's the time that you need to do the research? What's the, obviously, it's four weeks, just from the basics of this. What's the time you need to evaluate the research? And what's the time you need to turn in the final product?
Yeah, so I was able to collaborate with my instructor, Ron Pedro, and he has offered at least a thirty day extension, and he said if needed, we can go beyond that. He said it's important to do the process correct and help students, even if it takes a little bit longer for, to complete that, so. bit longer for, to complete that. So...
Okay. So you're looking at 60 days on the early side at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, sometimes, you know, we obviously have a lot of questions. There's definitely a little more feedback we're looking for. But with that, if there's any other questions, this would be the time. And if something comes up between now and our next meeting, just let Marge know, copy me on any other data so that way we can collect it, if that makes sense? Or, I'm sorry, I feel we're going to make a motion tonight?
There was a request in the packet to make a motion tonight, right?
Right. Okay. So do you feel we can, do we feel we have what we need to do that? Only because you went back.
Well, I have two possibilities.
Okay. Well, go for it. Absolutely. Please do.
And either one is open to friendly amendments. One is a motion to approve this instrument for classroom use for purposes of instruction with the understanding that the raw data will be used within district only and for educationally relevant uses. The other one would be based on, Michael, what you were saying about moving that this is an assessment as opposed to a survey and falls under the purview of the school. And I could make either of those motions.
Do the second one. I think we've got it.
Okay. So I move that the material presented to us represents an assessment as opposed to a survey and as such should be handled at the school building level.
Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy. Would you like to speak to your motion a little bit, please?
I think this is a marvelous project. And I think it's wonderful that you do this and continue with it. The connection, as we've talked about tonight, is very strong between these two. And the students are bound to benefit from the school having and using this information, regardless of any project uses you may have.
Excellent. So what, is there any other comments? Are there any other comments on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? One. The motion carries 401-0 with Board Member Thompson in opposition. And still, open if there are any questions that come up about this project. Definitely direct it to the superintendent so that she can vet the information, get it back to us. Thank you and good luck on your project.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Excellent. And I think you'll do great work for our district with this information. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your support this evening.
Excellent. And now we are on to item number six, speaking of policies. So second review of new policy, which is noneducational surveys and questionnaires. And I will leave it with Marge.
Thank you. So first, I want to tell you who I conferred with. I conferred with the New Hampshire School Boards Association Attorney Will Phillips. And Attorney Phillips did not develop the model policy based on the statute. So he did provide counsel about the questions that the board had raised. And there are really two that I want to highlight. So I'm going back in time because you remember, I brought this up back, I believe, in February. So at the time, Board Member Gualume asked if there was a survey that had a combination of academic and non-academic items, would that default to opt-in status? And Attorney Phillips has advised that the district needs to, I will use his quote, "play it safe" and have parents opt in if there was a combination of the two. He just feels that the time that we are operating in, the context in which we're operating in, it would be to our best advantage to have a parent see the whole thing and opt in. The second was more a comment, and this came from Board Member Schoenfeld. And what she wanted to see was more discussion on the miscellaneous provisions. If you look at page three, that's where the miscellaneous provisions sit. Now, this was fascinating to me, and this is why I so much respect the five of you, because Attorney Phillips compared the federal statute about non-academic surveys to the state statute and found out that this section is only in the federal statute. And when this was put together, it should not have been included, that in fact, the state statute really trumps, if you will, the federal statute, and that he would recommend removing this section. So he said, "You have done a service, not only for us, but for all of the other districts in the state. And the model policy is going to be redone because of the query made." So I think the notion of the give and take between and among all of us just makes for better. And I did not receive any other query from you. So I would hope that if I come back and have this section removed, I didn't do it tonight on purpose, but if I take this back out, that we could put perhaps this on the consent agenda for April 16th. Or if you need me to go further, I'm happy to do that. But those were the two pieces that were raised up.
Michael?
So I'm in agreement with what has been stated. My question would be is what impact, this is obviously a separate thing from this, but what kind of impact would that actually have on any of these items? And does it make it more of a challenge?
He doesn't feel that there will be any. I think he just felt strongly that what we need to be about right now is making sure that we adhere to the state statute. But he did not feel that that would bode ill. He just said, "It just doesn't need to be there." And of course, we just don't know, we're not sure who wrote it. And at the time, I mean, that wasn't what I was about. It was more to just address, how did it come to be? That was the question. I said, you know, the board has said it would like to discuss it more, but I'd like to know, from whence did it come? And so in doing the cross-check and so on, that's where he found it. And he just said, "It's not necessary to be in compliance with the state statute."
Andy?
So just to be clear, if we remove this section that says miscellaneous provisions, it means that these sorts of things to gather data on college or post-secondary education, recruitment, all that, those need to be opt-ins as opposed to opt-outs?
I think right now, based on my discussion with him, and I've had at least two conversations, is that we need to opt in for just about everything we do. In fact, you know, we might be one of the few districts in the state that has any kind of a survey. I don't care what it is, but it goes before you. If it's a student, teacher, parent, it doesn't matter because I would want all of you informed when you're dealing with the public, with your constituents. I want you to have seen what they're going to be in receipt of, one way or the other. And so that's always been the way we've operated and has served us well. But I think in the time we are living, academic or otherwise, we just need to opt in so that people understand what is it we're seeking. Yes. Michael?
So that's just a follow-up. And that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is that, not from a lawyer perspective, but actually from a district perspective, if everything is opt-in, and these are some examples that the federal government have actually put that should be excluded for something like this, this, what is the impact to the district? And how does that actually cause more work? And my question would be is if we can actually detail that out and provide that back to our state representatives, there may be a means to actually amend what they voted on already. So that's kind of, it's separate from this. And I'm totally separating it, but I say that we should approve what the change is based off of the legal assessment and everything like that. But I think that we should go back and say, "Hey, here's some examples, representatives, that you've put more burden than I think you..." I think everybody knows my thought process on this actual law, considering the New Hampshire School Board Association thing that we put forward last year.
Resolution.
I'm sorry, resolution, that it was a reaction to something and it went too far. So I think that these might be examples that we can actually use to bring back to our state representatives and say, "Look, this is an additional burden even beyond the burden that you've already given us that we should at least agree upon in addressing." So that's what I'm kind of thinking of.
With the favorite term, "local control," always thrown in there for good measure.
Yes.
So, yes. Well, there's that. So I actually only had one question on the document itself. And the first legal reference, is that to the miscellaneous provisions? Because it looks like it's USC or maybe a federal legal reference on page three? So...
So I'll go back when I undo it and do. So that because there will be such a modification in the next packet, assuming that I can put it on consent, I'll give you a new one, I mean, redone. Normally, if we're taking out a word or a line, I don't do that. But in this particular case, it will be different. Yeah, always.
Excellent. So with that, if there's no questions, we'll put on consent. If there are questions, we can always take it off between now and our next meeting. Excellent. And then we're on to item number seven, which is the update on the tentative last day of school based on the count of instructional hours. And back to you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to start and then I'm going to turn to Mark. So what I want you to know is after our last board meeting, I attended a meeting for systems leaders on March 23rd. And at that time, Amy Clark, who is the one designated at the State Department level to oversee about snow day makeups, she stood and gave a presentation. And she was very forthright about saying, "I know," said she, "that all of you have lost a lot of time because of all of the weather situations that we have had. And the expectation is that you will follow the directive from the state, which is to go back and calculate instructional hours." She said, "Once again, I am going to say, 'No waivers have been granted.'" You know, something was in the paper, something was on MUR. It is not true. No waivers have been granted. "And I'm not saying I won't grant a waiver," said she, "but you would need to show me that even with doing a calculation of instructional hours, you can't make the time. And then we'll talk. But I expect you to go back and do the calculation of instructional hours." So it was said by the overseer, very clear. All of us heard it. "And so it is incumbent upon us to do the exercise as we've been asked to do." And that's really what Mark has been about in working with all business, or business building administrators. So what I want you to know is we're going to render something tonight, but still know that we're in flux because we sit at the beginning of April. And I don't know about you, but I've seen inclement weather in April. So we have to be just a little bit flexible here.
We saw it this morning.
Well, that's, yeah. It kind of played into our hand, to be honest. It did play into our hand. Yes. So, Mark?
Well, there's not a whole lot more to add. As we had mentioned to you previously, and we affirmed tonight that June 22nd, as of right now, calculating instructional hours really is the last day of school. And it's just important to note that part of the reason that we need those extra days at the end of June, those make, those makeup days are because they, not so much for the days, but the hours that they provide to us. So we still wouldn't be at quite 180 days, but we do achieve the instructional hours. And so there it is, June 22nd, barring any additional weather calamity or what have you, that's the day. So really, and it's been, you know, confirmed by the leaders at each of the levels, K through 12.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, and we, relative to kindergarten, that always gets a little bit complicated because in addition to the days that are called due to inclement weather, there are some days that are called delayed opening. But particularly for AM kindergarten, a delayed opening is like a no-school day. So really, we have those that we have to make up as well, whereas you don't have to make those up for, for, you know, first through 12, because we get a full school day counted and, you know, and the, and the hours minus those delayed opening hours. But it's a lost day completely. So I'm working with the elementary principals right now in developing a plan, much like we did last year, to have up to four full days. So remember, you have to have, you know, part of the days we count as days we owed anyway. And then the other half of the day, so that would make it a full day, would be the makeup days. So working with the principals right now to determine a schedule for that. And we'll have, you know, more to say to our community pretty soon about that.
Thank you. Now, questions? Cindy? Michael, was that your question? Your hand was up. Okay. I will call you next if you're still interested.
So as to last year, when we did the full days in a similar process, did the district receive any complaints from parents? I know I didn't as one member of the school board, but I was just curious if we received feedback.
And not only were there no complaints, it was actually really positive. We did get a lot of very good feedback. Parents really appreciated the opportunity to have their children, you know, kind of experience a full day, get that stamina for a full day. It's a big deal to eat in the cafeteria.
It's part of a transition.
As part of a transition process, it's a big deal to, you know, be with the big boys and girls, you know, and also the extended learning opportunity that that provides. But really, just the negotiating of a day was really important. And we got a lot of feedback from parents about the benefit of that.
Well, and certainly, there's really, you're in a rock and a hard place. You know, there's, it's that or extended out another week, a full other, full other week for kindergarten, right?
Correct.
The district or however we would have to do that. But I was just curious if we had any feedback. Secondly, does the June 22nd date still put us within kind of the, you know, we always kind of put a few day, mark a few days out on the calendar as like kind of hold the, hold the dates kind of thing in cases? Do we go past those dates that were on our calendar? Or is that where those dates ended, the extra Xs at the end?
Yep. So the 22nd, I'm sorry. Yep, the 22nd of June is the last X.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
So a question, then a comment. The question is, given the fact you're counting hours now, if we have delays, does it impact it between now and the end of the year? How close are we to the edge?
It could. It could. But, well, I wouldn't say it could. It will. So, you know, we all just got to hope because everything that I'm saying to you now is completely thrown away if we have, you know, even another delay.
And at that point, that's why we would probably come back to you as a board and ask you to direct me to ask the DOE for a waiver because we would have gone up to the 22nd, which was the MU, our last MU, and we would have taken care of kindergarten, hopefully. So we would show good faith and talk in terms of why we don't want to go because our parents don't want to go. And you, on behalf of them, would say such. So it would be a concerted effort. That's why it's so important for us to do what we need to kindergarten-wise and have the instructional hours counted so we can do proof, you know? These are good faith efforts, and we've done them. Then I'd come back to you because it would be a directive from you. I can't ask for a waiver without you approving that. So we've kind of got to, step by step, we go. And I think that stands us in good stead.
So, that's good. So the comment is, is that I was surprised to read an article in Union Leader this morning about Bedford, where they, they have announced that next year that they're going to do hours and not days based on what they've seen. So my first comment is, is I think we as a board should pay attention to what Bedford does next year as they do to ours, to see sort of learning, because they have a lot of similarities in terms of snow days and stuff that we do. Just wait a minute. But the second part is, is that you said that there was no, no waivers that were granted. It's really interesting that in the article, there was a comment that your cohort in the Bedford district mentioned that, "Oh, the days we lost in October, those have been, those have been sort of dispensation" or something like that. So there's very dangerous reporting, even in an article today, that implies that there was a waiver given for those days because their last day is, I think, the 20th is what's posted. So...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And the other thing that's so important for us to remember is that many of our sister districts started in August. So they've got wiggle. They've got, they've got wiggle room. And sister districts don't offer an August academy that we do, which is putting all that professional development up front. So there are assets and liabilities to everything we do. I would say that so benefits our professional staff. I, you know, I can't see giving that up so that we pull a day here or there. But if you have that latitude, you can play around. You can, you can move things more easily. Because we start after Labor Day, and that's the parent's choice, and because we front-end our professional development, it gives us less latitude. And that's okay. But we have to put up with just a tighter framework.
And to that end, I just, before I, Michael has his hand up, but to that end, when we did the parent survey, they really, it was like, I think it was 77% wanted to start after Labor Day, because they look at that as the end of summer. And going back in August then is robbing days of summer, just as staying in school is June, is robbing days of summer. So we do it on the end, not the beginning. But, but we're just fulfilling our obligations. So to that, we've gotten overwhelming response from parents that they want to have that evening, that August academy, so that way it starts after Labor Day. So, Michael?
So just to follow up on Andy's comment about hours, I would actually say that the district actually has a either/or at this point, considering the last two years, we've actually used hours instead of days to calculate it. So I, I think that we have the ability for the, the administration has done a good job of using which one, and obviously takes advantage of the best outcome. And I will point out that Bedford started four, four school day, four days prior to us. And actually, I guess you would call them four school days prior to us. It's not just four calendar days, so.
And they're getting out two days early.
Yes. Right.
But the teacher workdays were during the year as opposed to at the beginning.
Right.
Even though they started earlier, sort of not really, it's.
And I guess the point is, is that most parents are like, we want the kids out earlier, or we want more time with the kids. And actually, the way that we have it set up is actually allowing them to actually have more time with the kids.
Well, the only reason I brought it up is because what wasn't in the article that I'm not sure is, most districts that do teachable hours will tend to add time to a school day in order to sort of shorten the day and add snow days into the calendar and things, which is something we talked about a few years ago, but didn't go through with. If we start doing this teachable hours, I mean, the instructional hours, year after year after year, I think we may be forced to do it. And we are coming up into a year where there's a negotiation of a teacher's contract. And I'll say the same thing I did three years ago. We may want to look at making sure that the contract is flexible enough to handle different scenarios, because we sort of have to future-proof ourselves, so.
March?
And I also want to say for the first time again, based on a comment that the board made, you will note that next year, the published calendar definitely specifies about make-up days and what it means, and how you need to hold that in abance in case we need to draw. So I would hope that we, next year, use the same methodology we've had for the last two. We show days, 180, but we can come back and use instructional hours if we need to. And then you go forward as a board when you're negotiating the contract and talk about time in the whole, which I think makes sense, because then it's, it's time for lots of things, you know? And it gets holistically instead of partisan.
Okay. All right. Questions, comments, or sneezes? No? That's a checking. Seeing none? Let's look forward to June 22nd and getting on with our lives after that. And so I will go on to item number eight, which is a guaranteed health insurance rate for 1819 with Matt.
You recall when we do the budget, we put in for the health insurance rate our guaranteed maximum rate by the trust. That's what's incorporated in building the 1819 budget, and that rate was 3.5%. And then, in the spring, after the budget is all done, and usually right before the vote, we actually get what the actual rate is. Sometimes it's lower and sometimes it's not. So the guarantee, the guaranteed actual rate is 3.5%. So no change from what we budgeted from.
Excellent. Couldn't get worse. But I thought it was great, a great number to come in at anyways.
Absolutely.
It was breathtakingly good. So we are good to go. Budget holds up, so. Down to the penny. So that's excellent news. On that, we will go to item number nine, which is the approval of the March 19 minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes, made by Andy, seconded by Naomi. Any edits to the minutes? Michael?
On page two, line 83, for clarification, it said, "Executive Director Lagos replied that the pension system operates on a fiscal year and should state that which is not a calendar year. And the stock market uses traditional year measurement."
Okay. Ready to edit. Seeing none, we'll put the minutes to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 500. Onto item number nine, or 10, I'm sorry, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000. And I will put that over to Matt as well. It says it's me, but I think it should be you.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you, you know, wanted to.
I'm not stealing your thunder. You're very good at this.
Okay, thank you. Well, tonight, it's my pleasure to announce two gifts that we have. One is from Tracy and Jerry Bull, who live in Merrimack, and it's in the amount of $2,000. It is for the Merrimack High School US First Team Number 166. And we thank them very much for their continued support of this program and the $2,000 generous gift towards the US First Team. The second we have is from the Health Trust. We have a healthcare cost containment committee that meets on a monthly basis. And this is because of their hard work, we're getting a gift of $3,200 from the Health Trust, who just gave us a 3.5% increase on our guaranteed rate. It's for six designated health and safety coordinators for the district to attend a full-day training session. It's important that this, this goes on and this money is used for this purpose, because the work of the healthcare cost containment committee gets us rate increases, or sometimes very minimal rate increases, like we had this year, with their hard work and the activities that they participate in, the support they show the entire staff in trying to promote wellness throughout the district. So $3,200 from the Health Trust.
Thank you. Cindy? Please do.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept these generous gifts from Mr. and Mrs. Gerald Bull and the Health Trust, Inc., with our gratitude.
Use their second. Seconded by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The motion carries 500. Onto item number 11, which is the consent agenda with Mark.
So tonight, we have the following educator retirements and resignations. Jane Austin Evans, speech-language pathologist at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Robert Jidari, phys ed teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Margaret Irwin, third-grade teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Dawn Kerrigan, phys ed teacher at Merrimack Middle School. And Teresa Porter Cascaden, social studies teacher at Merrimack Middle School.
Is there a motion? Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The motion carries 500. Onto item number 12, correspondence. I'm going to start, because there's a couple official correspondence that came to the board. The first is from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. And it was supposed to be the same night as the MVD election, but with clarification that we were having one, they moved it. So the New Hampshire DOT is having a series of public information meetings in Merrimack, Bedford, and Nashua. And it's about the widening of the Route 3 corridor between Exa-8 and where it meets 293 at the interchange in Bedford. We are obviously quite the butter for that stretch when it comes to Merrimack. So their first meeting was Thursday, March 29th in Bedford. They're having a meeting April 3rd in Nashua at the Nashua City Hall Auditorium. And then the Merrimack night will be Tuesday, May 1st in the Merrimack High School cafeteria. So it'll be here in our high school cafeteria. So there will be an informal open house period from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, followed by a formal presentation at 7:00. And the meeting that we will have will probably also be on Merrimack TV, I believe it was planned for that, the first iteration. So I'm assuming with the second. So, so on, on that, we're obviously going to have an impact along the high school perimeter, the border that touches the Everett Turnpike. So it's going to be something we're going to want to keep an eye on as a district. And I, I will be glad to attend, just to get to know. But it is a public open for anyone, but we definitely want to keep an eye on that project. Second, the New Hampshire Art Educators Association sent a letter of thanks for the tireless work on their Board of Directors by Mary Beth Donovan Olson, who is our art teacher at Reed's Ferry School, an award-winning art teacher. And she provides a lot of great resources to this organization, and they sent a letter of thanks and appreciation. Since I'm on, I'll just do three that came to me directly. There was a constituent that wanted to know the names that were going to be on the school district ballot. The ballot template was finalized, and will be on our website if it's not up tonight, tomorrow morning. I had a parent that reached out because they wanted to talk about eliminating April vacation going forward, so to save five days and get out five days earlier. And another constituent that asked if we could consider adding minutes to the day in small quantities to just kind of add up and have a few days to play with, with snow days as well. So something we still consider every day because of the region of the country we live in. So those are my five. Are there any other, any other correspondents? Michael?
An individual reach out in regards to the filtration system in the school district that is on the ballot.
Okay. Any, what else? Chris Puzzo?
This is kind of a weird one, but a bunch of my, a bunch of kids came up to me. They wanted to know if you guys could make a regulation regarding finals that you don't have to take them unless you get an A, if you have an A in the class?
I.
They were legitimate about it. They had like some actual reasoning behind it, besides just they don't want to take it.
I remember having that option in college, but I'm, and I'll just weigh in pretty quickly. I mean, we as a board can discuss, but I'll just take my personal position on it. And that is that we usually have grading at the, with guidelines, obviously, but at, you know, that's a classroom level. I had some that if you had an A going into the final, you didn't have to take it. And I had some that didn't. And both are allowed to run their classrooms the way they saw fit. So on that note, from a high school perspective, it may have a couple more rules, but in the good old, the good old college days, you know, that's how we, we ran things. So. But if there's any feedback from the, from the administration, I will, that I might have missed.
No, I would just say, Chris, can you tell me, have the students gone to see Principal Johnson?
I'm not sure. They just came up to me because they knew I was on the school board and I could like do something about it.
Yeah. So that would be, you, you would need to deal with the high school administration. So I would say, as a student rep, it would be in your best interest to make a formal appointment with him and express on their behalf what they're seeking.
All right. I'll talk to them about that. Thank you.
As I said, we're always available to come to student government.
Student council.
Student council, not congress. That's right. Okay. And you were going to use the wrong terms, I didn't use either. So, so if they ever want to just meet with us to get feedback, then we'd always be glad to take it. So on that note, there's no other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none, any comments from the board? Seeing none? Oh, there is a comment from administration. I'll take it.
No, just, just a reminder that tomorrow night is the community event hosted by Merrimack Safeguard. It's going to be at the John O'Leary Center from 6:00 to 8:15. They're going to be, the, the big marquee event of the night is the unveiling of the, the video that's going to launch our community Merrimack Safeguard's AOK campaign, which is a very connected, in a way, to what Julie DeLuca and Jennifer Busio were talking about today when they were talking about helpers. And this is a, a video that helps to promote the idea that we all need help, no matter who we are and whatever circumstance we're in. And the video shows different district leaders who talk about their experience offering and asking for help. And then there will be a lot of community vendors there that, who are also helpers for health and emotional wellness and a variety of other ways. And so there'll be lots of ways that they can help. And there'll be lots of tables, raffles, cool stuff. So John O'Leary Center at 6 o'clock.
Excellent. Good plug. So if there are no other comments, we're going into new business? Is there any new business to come before the board? Marge, I'm just going to keep to this side of the table.
I know. So I just want to highlight something upcoming. You remember, at the end of the year, for the last few years, we have been known to bring the schools before you to do presentations. That's how we close the year. And this year, we're going to do something a little bit different. We're going to have the three elementaries come before you, and the focus is going to be on the new math program. And then the upper elementary in the middle are going to come together, and they're going to talk about the implications of the new math program. And the high school, who hasn't gotten into a new math program yet, will be doing programming, programming, programming in a different, on different topics. But we just wanted you to know then, rather than each school be highlighted, it would have started tonight up until June, that these presentations will be in May and June, and they will be on, on a topic that a lot of time has been spent on, math.
Thank you very much. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Seeing none? Onto committee reports. Are there committee reports? Start with Chris Puzzo and start working our way up the table.
So the first, the first team went to a competition at UNH this weekend, and we got three medals.
Yeah, very nice. Have one in my kitchen.
Yeah. And we're moving on. So the award we won, we had to compete in this award at districts. And I believe if we win a district, we got a trip to Worlds Paid For. So we're really hoping we get to go to Worlds this year.
Okay. It's great news.
Oh, and Cavalcade of Bands, which where all the bands in the district play, is this one there?
Yes, it is. 6:30. I know, because I have to be, I have to drop people off. So, are there any other committee reports? Cindy?
Mark covered the Safeguard update, which is, I was just going to reiterate that as well, that the event's tomorrow night. Secondly, I had attended the District Parents' Night last week, where we basically went through and heard about all the great things that our various schools are doing and other in, in special services, support, parent support group are doing throughout the district. So it was really interesting to see them all share some fundraising ideas and, and talk about what they're doing with some of the money that they've been raising. And like I said, just to be able to have that networking across the parent groups was really great. It was a really neat meeting.
Excellent. Are there any other committee reports? I have just some NHSBA updates. So the NHSBA Board of Directors met last week, and we met with the congressional leadership representatives from Washington. So essentially, our congressmen and our senators, Congresswomen and senators, each have representatives that specialize in the space of education. And we did a roundtable to talk about what's important to us as they are dealing with the federal level. And things that came up are obviously things like school vouchers, which we're dealing with on the state level as well, and what that will do to being able to fund a public school system that doesn't have the same regulations as private. And also, school safety is obviously paramount based on, based on what happened in Parkland on February 14th. And, you know, not in a political way, but in a, a general way. You know, once you're done with, you know, the windows that are bullet resistant and the secured entrances and the cameras, you know, what more can be done? And what more is being worked on? What's more is being discussed? So keeping that line of communication open about school safety with our federal representation was a big part of that discussion as well. So, and on another note, I did attend on behalf of the NHSBA a press conference, speaking about Senate. about Senate Bill 193, which is the voucher bill for New Hampshire, and the impact it could have to public schools. So, on behalf of the NHSBA, Barrett Christina, our executive director, spoke, as did the vice chair of the London Dairy School District, Nancy Hendricks. So I did not have to speak, they just took one from each, and I just spoke into our delegation in Washington, so she took, took the state on. And she's also on our board. And so there was probably about 50 people representing the delegation in opposition of SB 193 at the press conference. The final thing is, I will be leaving Friday and coming back technically Tuesday morning at midnight, hopefully flights are better than last time, but I will be at the National School Boards Association annual meetings. So I will come back with some great information and share with you what I, what I come back with. So, and benefit locally. So those are my things. So, based on that, we will close committee reports, because everyone got it, right? We're good? Okay. I will entertain public comments on agenda items if someone comes running in from the hallway, but since they're not, we will close public comments on agenda items, because it's an empty room. We will take a moment to sign the manifest. And I will entertain a motion to go to non-public session per RSA 91-a colon 3, Roman numeral 2, section B.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded by Andy. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor?
Michael?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 500. Thank you, and good night.